Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 6, 2025. It is 2:05 PM. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier. To my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus. Commissioners Mahia and Grant were hoping to zoom in. They're at a National Behavioral Health Conference in Philadelphia, but they are not going to be joining us, so their excuse for today. And also wanted to say that it's County Spirit Week and Band T-shirt Day, so it's like I might be the only one with true spirit here today.
[laughing]
I went for it and wore my PJ Harvey shirt, so if you see other staff wearing band shirts, that's what it's all about. Got dress-up days this week. Okay, one other upfront advisement. There's a 3:30 public hearing that was scheduled and is not canceled or postponed to May 20th. That's due to some noticing issues that we needed to iron out, so if you're here for that, or you're, you know, you're waiting for that, 3:30 on May 20th, and that is related to...
Disposition of county property.
Right, disposition of county property, conforming county code to state law with respect to how we can, for what purposes, we can dispose of county property. Okay, so with all that up front, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'd like to proceed with a land acknowledgement, Mr. Vice Chair.
We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squaxen Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you, sir. And now we have consideration of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up is Presentations, and first up is Election Assistance Commission Cleary Award for our Auditor's Office. Let's see, Auditor Hall. Do I have the wrong award? Auditor Hall, welcome.
Thank you. Do I need to move this?
Yeah, point that up and it should be good.
Is that good?
Yep.
Alrighty. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for recognizing this award. The Cleary Award really is like the Academy Award of Election Awards. It is the Election Assistance, Lexon Assistance Commission that, that hands out these awards, and every county in the country applies for these, and we have many, many times. But I'm thrilled that we won the award for our outreach effort. And I also think it's important to mention that we did receive an honorable mention on our accessibility efforts last year, working with inner-city transit. So an honorable mention is pretty nice to get up as well. But one of the things that we are big believers in, that the way to build trust in elections is really through transparency. And elections are conducted by people, and there are a lot of rumors out there of what's really happening. So we brought people together, and we've wanted to show the community who really is behind elections, and it's really your neighbors, right? It's your mother, it's your sister, it's your aunt. And I think when people see the faces of the people that count the ballots, that process the mail, and realize that they're neighbors in the community, I think it really does create more trust in our election system. But I think what made this really powerful is that every election worker that is featured in these videos volunteered for this effort. And, you know, we're in a climate where our election officials and election workers are receiving threats, and this followed, you know, the prior year, we received a fentanyl-laced envelope. So it was very courageous of them to step up, and I'm very grateful for that. But we've really defined, redefined what voter education looks like. It's personal, it's honest, and we've, you know, it's proven to be effective. And all of this was done in-house with very minimal cost. So I think, really think that this is government at its best. We were creative, resourceful, responsive to the times that we are in. And, you know, the national relevance of this award is, is quite an honor, because this was in the large county category. And, and maybe because I started my career in Pierce County, I don't view us as a large county. But, you know, we beat out counties like Pierce County, Los Angeles County, which is the largest county in the country. So I'm very proud of my staff for the election workers that volunteered for these, and especially the creator of this effort and the program, and who talked me out of wanting to edit these videos. I'd like to turn it over to Emmett O'Connell to say a few words.
So, my name is Emmett O'Connell. I'm the Communications Manager in the Auditor's Office. And so we organize our communication in elections into three columns. The first one is just information dates, information voters need to vote. Second one is what we've been focusing on a lot since 2020, but explaining how the ballot is counted. And the third one is the one we've been doing since Your Neighbor's Your Election. It's pulling that information through individuals' perspectives, people who work in elections. This is all based on research. There's been a lot of research talking about how you build trust in elections since 2020, and sort of like lo-fi, face-to-camera videos outperform well, I'm not saying these weren't well-edited, but more refined, more refined productions every time. So we did give some guidance to the folks. We gave them like how you should, how you should phrase your answer, but other than that, these were completely unscripted. These were only the people talking about what they, what their work was and why it mattered to them. And the most measurable, measure of success for this project was the change in tenor in online comments when we went to our digital ad campaign in the fall. As you might imagine, people have a lot of thoughts and a lot of strong thoughts about elections when presented to them in their social news feeds. The, and it's a lot of negative, and it's spent a lot of time in those comments responding. But once we, once we put money behind these ads, it was, it was breathtaking. It was really nice. It was, people were so, people were so kind. And the people who did decide to jump into those comment threads and say negative things were, were chastised. So it was not by me, by other people, so, but it was really, it was really great. So thank you again for honoring, for recognizing us today.
I want to say, we did it with a smartphone camera.
I'm guessing, Auditor, that Los Angeles and Pierce and King have bigger communications budgets than Thurston County.
Certainly. And they're both my friends, so it'll be really fun when I see them at our national conference.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Auditor. Okay, thank you. Get a photo with the auditor?
If they'd like to share a video, we can.
Oh.
We're doing a photo.
Let's do it.
My name is Randy Gagnon. This is going on year number eight that I've worked now for the elections. My job here is different, different types of job. I work what they call intake, which will include processing ballots from the streets, prepping ballots to get ready for an inspection day, help with the machine, just pretty much everything that needs to be done in order for the ballot to get counted and processed for tabulation and the totals. What I like working here is the process of elections, counting ballots for the voters, helping the ballot get processed from point A to point B, just being able to help that as a, kind of like my civic duty to help. The way their votes counted accurately is, I'm just really impressed with what they do. They have two people at all times with the ballots in all aspects of processing, picking up the ballots, counting the ballots, moving the ballots. And the process that they do is, is very impressive, that if somebody would come down to watch what we do, I think they're going to be impressed with how it's counted from the minute we get the ballot to the minute we process it through a tabulator and count it for the voter.
All right, cool. All right. Thank you so much, Auditor Team. So next on the agenda, we have several...
Can we give them a round of applause, because I wanted to acknowledge, like, this is actually a really prestigious award. When we met last week, Auditor Hall, and you, you told me this was the Academy Award of Elections, I actually looked into it, and I'm really, really impressed that our county was able to accomplish this, you know, earning of this prestigious award. And I really appreciate the hard work that goes into the elections. Thank you, Emmett, for, you know, your fantastic contributions to this effort, and very, you know, your team overall, I've seen firsthand how much you care. I've had the pleasure of touring the ballot processing center twice. Once was actually on Election Day, and to see how busy everybody was, and how much everyone was just like, I mean, really, everyone was locked in. They were so focused on what they were doing, but you could still see how much joy there was, and you could feel it in the room, because people care so much about making sure we have fair and transparent and efficient elections. So, thank you, and congrats.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have several consent proclamations. If available, each consent proclamation has a representative here today to speak to the importance of the topic at hand. Although they might not be speaking, there may be additional groups in attendance, and we appreciate them being here. The speakers and additional groups receive their proclamations just before the start of the meeting. We will continue with our meeting after the proclamations, but if any group that's honored would like a photo with your proclamation, if you could wait till the, all of them have been presented, and then meet our staffer Ellen Massey out in the hall, and, and you can have a photograph taken with the proclamation. We thank everyone for being here today, and we'll get started. So first up, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Thurston County. Lynn Crowley is here from the Asian American Islanders Coalition, South Puget Sound Chapter. Floor is yours, Lynn.
Thank you so much. My name is Lynn Crowley, and it's my honor to be here again with all of you to say thank you for offering this beautiful proclamation, and also help us honor the Heritage Month, that we are going to be doing all kinds of activities, of which I'm going to use this opportunity to also share with all of you. Washington has a very rich and diverse AANHPI community, with 20% of the state's population identify as an HPI. And all these individuals have played important roles in shaping the history and culture of our state. And from the early Chinese immigrants who, which many of you do probably know from reading the history books, who helped build the railroads, to the Japanese-American who were interned during World War II. And in addition to that, we have a lot of more recent immigrants in our community. And the Southeast Asian communities will be celebrating their 50th year anniversary this year of the war in Southeast Asia. And many of them are now part of our communities too, which added to our beautiful tapestry of our community, which we are most welcome. But we also realize how much more we needed to kind of learn from each other and get to know each other. Therefore, we are very happy to share with all of you that we are going to have another AANHPI Heritage Month celebration event again this year, and it's going to be held at the Evergreen State College Loan House, and that's going to be on May 24th. So it's open to all, so I just wanted to say that all of you are welcome to join us for the celebration. We will have a lot of food, performances, resource and information tables, as well as, you know, workshops to allow the younger kids, or those young at heart, to, you know, do some different kind of workshops that you may not, or you have learned before, but it will be a good opportunity for you to kind of enjoy the celebration and the beautiful cultures that we all have in our communities. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, you know, thank you for offering us the proclamation. And, you know, this has been an effort that is done through, you know, from December all the way through this year. So I'm hoping that I can use this opportunity to officially invite all of you, the council members, as well as the greater communities, to join us for the celebration. And I just wanted to kind of pause for a second, if I may, to show you the flyer that we brought. Is that okay? Thank you.
I was gonna ask you what time, so your flyer will probably tell me.
So I just wanted to show you all, this is our website, as well as, you know, probably you will see them around the whole communities, because we post them in several different grocery stores and things like that. So I hope you will like that too. So I'm officially giving one to our chair. Thank you.
Perfect. We'll make sure. 11 to 4.
Thank you.
I've been to the last few, and they've always been really, really fun and, and good, awesome event.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. So other than that, like what I said, I just wanted to mention, Epic South Puget Sound is a part of seven chapters around this state, and we are a coalition which made up of a lot of different organizations' representatives around this area. So we have a monthly meeting, so if any one of you are interested, or you like to go ahead and share about the latest updates from your organizations, you are welcome to join us. It's going to be held on the third Monday of every month in the evening time. And if any one of you is interested, it's all posted on our website, so people can actually just go to that and then find out how to join us for the Zoom meeting that is usually happening. So that's all I wanted to say for today. Thank you so much again for giving me the opportunity to accept this proclamation. I do like to get a picture taken.
Yeah, thank you. Just, yeah, if you could hang out, Ellen will help do that for you after we're done with the proclamations. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as APWA National Public Works Week in Thurston County. Karen Wees, Director of Public Works for Thurston County, is here to speak to it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Wees, Public Works Director. I am not dressed early for Halloween. I am wearing safety orange on behalf of Public Works. So thank you very much to the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation and for shedding some light on the often unseen but essential work that Public Works professionals do. This year's Public Works theme is People, Purpose, and Presence, and that really speaks to our core values. Our Public Works employees seek to serve the community, leading with safety, accountability, a high level of customer service, innovation, and teamwork. So I want to recognize the incredible people of Thurston County Public Works, from our engineers and planners, our surveyors, construction inspectors, our maintenance and operations crews, water and sewer utility operators, staff that provide solid waste services and expertise in noxious weeds management, and the support staff who make sure we have the resources to accomplish our work. My list could go on and on and on. I won't. But they show up every day with professionalism, pride, and commitment to making a difference in Thurston County. The purpose for our work, it touches nearly every aspect of your daily lives: safe roads, clean water, stormwater management, sustainable waste solutions, noxious weed management, and reliable public infrastructure. So we're proud of the presence that we have in the community and the investments that we are making to improve the quality of life, not just for Thurston County now, but for future generations. So I would encourage everyone, residents, students, civic leaders, to learn more about what Public Works does, and to take a moment this week to thank some of your Public Works professionals, the people who are working behind the scenes to provide the services we rely on every day. And as we celebrate National Public Works Week, which is actually May 18th through the 24th, on behalf of Public Works, I want to renew our commitment to provide excellent services in all of areas of our business, and to be the premier Public Works organization, accountable and transparent in all services we provide to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Last, we routinely get compliments on your staff's work and your team's work. I was able to read one of the emails that we got about your noxious weed folks last week, and I was glad that's well timed. I didn't time that to Public Works Week, but it's apropos. So let's give Public Works a hand. All right, next up, we have, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Bike Month in Thurston County, and we're excited to have Duncan Green from Inner City Transit here to share about the Bicycle Community Challenge.
Okay. Hi, everybody. For the record, my name is Duncan Green, and I'm here representing Inner City Transit and Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. And I just, my, my biggest mission is to just say thanks, Commissioners, for proclaiming May as Bike Month in Thurston County. And I didn't wear my band T-shirt, but I did wear my BCC T-shirt, which has the, this year's slogan on it.
BCC means?
Bicycle Community Challenge. Yes. Thanks for that clarification. So, May is also National Bike Month. As noted in the proclamation, the month-long Bicycle Community Challenge is our local celebration, along with Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, which is on May 15th this year. The BCC and all of its events are free of charge, and everyone is encouraged to participate. You can log in or create a free account at bcc.intradit transit.com. We have many local regional supporters, supporting the BCC with everything from donating prize items, offering discount coupons and free passes, support and venues for our events, and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. This year's theme for the BCC is Be a Beacon for Bicycling, which is on my T-shirt. And on that note, I just want to widen the spotlight from the Bicycle Community Challenge to Inner City Transit's Walk and Roll Program, which the Bicycle Community Challenge is now kind of under the umbrella of Walk and Roll at Inner City Transit. And Walk and Roll has really grown into a real beacon for bicycling, with a burgeoning roster of classes, activities, volunteer opportunities, and creative ways to get people on bikes, keep people, keep bikes in use by people who need them. We're partnering with schools, the statewide Cascade Bicycle Club, and several community organizations to provide education, resources, and bikes in a wide variety of settings. We teach kids and adults how to ride safely and how to maintain and equip their bikes. We have a growing pool of dedicated volunteers helping on every initiative. There are literally too many of these activities to list in one sentence, so please just check us out on the Inner City Transit website under the Services tab to learn more. And I did, I did want to also acknowledge Public Works, and to just say, if any of you don't know this, that there, on the Thurston County website, under Public Works, there is a page, I haven't visited lately, so not remembering exactly where it is, but under Service Requests, and you can request that Thurston County Public Works come out and sweep the bike lane, or clean up fallen branches, basically clear the roads and the bicycle infrastructure in Thurston County for safe biking. And they also maintain a good part of the Chehalis Western Trail. So Thurston County Public Works, thank you for supporting bicycling in our county. So the BCC Bicycle Community Challenge starts last Thursday, and so it is now time to ride in the 30th, 38th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge for Fun, Health, and a Cleaner Greener Community. It's easy to participate as an individual or a member of a team. Just go to bcc.intradit transit.com to sign up or log into your existing account. And feel, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. You can reach me by email at dgreen@intradit transit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you all Commissioners may have now as well.
I have a question. So I, I gravitated off the IT Authority Board as the new building was coming into kind of, and I know there's a walk and roll piece of the new building. And does that, is that, did that replace what was downtown before, or are they both going, or?
No, that, the, the new shop that we have, just a block away,
Yeah.
replaced the downtown facility.
Okay.
It's smaller, but so much better.
Okay.
And I would invite anybody to come and visit us there. We have an amazing bike shop that's staffed by volunteers, and also is an educational bike shop where there are classes to prepare your bike.
I took a bike repair class, but it was downtown.
Yeah.
And I toured the new one, but it was empty.
So it's,
I didn't get to see it, like, all decked out.
Jammed with bikes now, and so clean and organized, and it's just really nice space.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you.
Yeah. And I'll stick around for a picture.
Perfect. Appreciate that. All right, just give him a hand. Okay, next, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Thurston County, and we have Chief Brian Van Kamp on behalf of the EMS Council.
Welcome. Afternoon. I'm Brian Van Kamp. I'm Fire Chief at South Bay Fire District Eight and the Chair of Medic One Operations Committee. And on behalf of the Thurston County Fire Chiefs Association and the Medic One Operations Committee, I wanted to thank you for recognizing the community's fire and EMS responders. In 2024, the 12 local fire departments that operate in the county responded to over 48,000 calls of medical and fire and so forth, varying from very minor to very critical events. And in each case, volunteer and professionals worked hard to make somebody's worst day from getting more worse. So, you know, leave it better than you find it. So the responders are prepared to do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And we all look forward to continued preparedness and service to the citizens of the community, and again, wanted to thank you for recognizing them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you. Okay, next, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month in Thurston County, and we have Maria Tobin here to receive proclamation on behalf of South Sound Military and Communities Partnership.
Good afternoon, Chair Mensor, Thurston County Commissioners. I apologize for my very raspy voice. My children share all the things with me, including everything they pick up from school. But more importantly, as an Army veteran, a military spouse, and as the program manager for the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, I want to extend our deep gratitude for this proclamation, recognizing May as Military Appreciation Month. This recognition carries very special meaning for our South Sound region, where military service, civic commitment, and community support are woven tightly and share a very special symbiotic relationship. The South Sound is home to Joint Base Lewis McCord, one of the largest military installations in the Department of Defense, and the only Army power projection platform west of the Rockies. Our service members, veterans, and their families are not just stationed here. In fact, one-third of our service members assigned at JBLM live here in Thurston County. They go to They go to school here and contribute every day to their, to the life of our communities. And because of our very fine hospitality, 50, 50% of those service members, when they exit the military, decide to stay here permanently. This month is an opportunity to acknowledge their sacrifice, yes, but also to celebrate their leadership, their resilience, and the power, powerful example they set for all of us. At SSMCP, our mission is to provide regional leadership to bridge our military and civilian communities surrounding Joint Base Lewis McCord across Pierce and Thurston Counties. We partner with 12 cities, two counties, tribal lands, and other local, state, and federal partners to ensure that our military, as our military serves us, we are also serving them with housing, infrastructure, access to healthcare, education, and meaningful connections. This proclamation isn't just a formality. It's a reminder that appreciation must be active. It means showing up for military families who face deployments and transitions. It means building systems and support veterans as they return to civilian life. And it means investing in the shared future we all hold, not just as good neighbors, but great neighbors. Let this month inspire us not just to say thank you, but to continue to build a community where our service members and their families feel seen, supported, and valued, not only in May, but every month of the year. Thank you again for this honor and for standing with our military community.
Next, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Older Americans Month in Thurston County. Ellen?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. We did have, we invited several groups to this, and Brian Windrup, the Executive Director of Senior Services of South Sound, was unable to attend today, but does send his appreciation for this proclamation and wanted me to pass along his regards to the Board.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Now, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 12th through 16th, 2025, as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day. We are honored to have Police Chief Jay Mason from the City of Tomwater. Additionally, we have our own County Sheriff Derek Sanders.
Commissioners, Sheriff Sanders, thank you for allowing me to be here. I've been a law enforcement officer in Thurston County for 31 years. And just, I want to thank you for this proclamation in honor of the men and women of the Tomwater Police Department and what our community allows us to do. I'd also want to thank Sheriff Sanders and as well as Chief Allen and Chief Almata for the partnerships that we have with our agencies, because we couldn't do this job without them. We couldn't provide the service that we do without them. And the last thing I'll say is Police Week was signed into existence by President Kennedy in 1962 to honor the sacrifice of the men and women who were out there serving every day, but also for the men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice in protecting their communities and also the impacts that those sacrifices had on their families. So I want to thank you for this honor, for this recognition, and for this proclamation accepted on behalf of the men and women of the Tomwater Police Department.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of County Commissioners and executive staff. I wanted to thank you guys for recognizing those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. You know, it's been 122 years since Thurston County Sheriff's Office has experienced a line of duty death, when one of our corrections deputies was killed due to an escaping inmate. So I'd also like to recognize the dangerous work that our corrections staff engage in every single day, caring for inmates inside of our facility. And, you know, in Washington State, 315, 319 line of duty deaths in the history of our state. There's also been 15 canine deaths in the history of our state. And the vast majority of those deaths are by gunfire or beating. And I think that's the, the big thing that I want to drive home for, for people is that many of us in our professions face risk, but rarely do any professions face their most adverse risk from homicidal acts. And that's what makes it very unique for those of the, for those of the individuals who are inscribed on the memorial up at the, up at the Capitol. So I thank you guys for recognizing this and the impact that it has on coworkers, on their families, and on the community at large. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chief Mason. Okay. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, you might have noticed some commissioners and staff wearing band shirts as part of Spirit Week as the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Public Service Recognition Month. Maria Ponte, Director of Human Resources, is here to share more.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and everybody in attendance. I'm really proud to be here today to ask you to proclaim May 4th through May 10th as Public Recognition Week in Thurston County. The timing of me being here following these great presentations really highlights all of the work that our employees do, and a lot of it is unseen. They do it seamlessly with a lot of pride, and I'm very happy that we have the workforce that we do. And I think that's, you know, due to your influence and wanting to appreciate our employees and always supporting these things. This year, we're recognizing 106 employees that are reaching significant milestones of five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. And we have five employees that have hit that 35-year. So that's impressive, and it shows that the county is a great place to work. To recognize our employees, we don't do just one thing. We do multiple things. And this week is Spirit Week, and thank you for, those that wore the T-shirts. I don't happen to have one, so.
Maria, you should have contacted me.
No, I know.
I gotta close it.
Darn it. We're also doing Pacific Northwest Day. Yesterday was Crazy Hat Day. So, you know, we try to make it a fun environment, and a lot of our employees participate, so it shows me that that works. Our favorite appreciation is ice cream truck. We're doing that July 30th and July 31st. And we take it out to some of our other facilities out on Montman, the Capitol Campus. And for employees that can't actually come and get the ice cream, we get it prepackaged and delivered so that they can actually enjoy it. So we don't want to leave anybody out. We also sponsor Thurston County Night at the Ballpark. This, this year, we're having four games in June, July, and August. And I also don't want to fail to mention that the Commissioners also give two free tickets to the fair. And so unless you have any questions, I just want to thank all of our dedicated county employees during this special week.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May 2025 as Therapeutic Court Month. Here to speak to this proclamation, we have prosecuting attorney John Toonheim, Alex Ross, Program Manager of Mental Health and Veterans Court, and Sabrina Craig, Therapeutic Court's Program Manager. Good afternoon, John.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Toonheim. I'm the county prosecutor, and it's really an honor and a pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about drug courts to give context to this proclamation. This proclamation, you probably know, coincides with National Therapeutic Court Month across the country, and also our governor's proclamation of Therapeutic Court Month in the state of Washington. In the early 1990s, District Attorney Prosecutor in Miami-Dade County, Florida, who, by the way, was Janet Reno at that time, and the presiding judge and the public defender came together to talk about a new and different way to deal with folks who found themselves in the criminal justice system because of a substance use disorder. That conversation led to the first drug court in Miami-Dade County, Florida. Since then, drug courts have spread throughout the country. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of drug courts across the country. In a couple of weeks, a team from Thurston County will be traveling back to Florida, not Miami, not Miami-Dade County, but back to Florida to participate in the National Drug Court Conference, known as All Rise 25, which brings together around nine or 10,000 drug court professionals, therapeutic court professionals from across the, across the country to learn about best practices and recent research. And I actually have the honor of being a presenter at a breakout session during that conference on building and maintaining hope in a therapeutic court. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for this proclamation and the recognition. Thurston County was an early adopter in a drug court, and that has led to our own establishment of a mental health court, a veterans' court, family treatment court, safe babies court. And we also have in this community a community court. And of course, you've heard of other tribal wellness courts, and the list goes on and on across the country. I wanted to give just a moment to one of my deputy prosecutors, Rosemary Fitzgerald, who works in our own drug court, to just say a few works, words, if you will, from somebody who's working day in, day in and day out in a drug court.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon. My name is Rosemary Fitzgerald. I've been a prosecutor in this county for 10 years, and I have been a treatment court prosecutor for about eight of those with five in drug court. I really recognize that our Commissioners are supportive of our therapeutic courts. I've seen many of you at graduations in Zoom or in person. And I would just invite you to actually come down and see how we do what we do. Every day, our team, our judge, our, myself, along with our defense attorney and our treatment folks, really engage with community members who we know have a substance use disorder. And those community members continue to show up. They continue to ask for help, and we continue to not only assist them and, and work with them in their struggles, but to celebrate their wins. I have someone today who is excited for his graduation. He has brand-new shoes that are fresh in the box. But I also have someone who's struggling with getting his kids to daycare and making it to court on time. And sometimes we also have birthdays, and we sell, celebrate happy birthday in a very off-key situation. But for folks in the community that are wondering how are we addressing substance use, or for folks in the community who have a responsibility for allocating funds, come and see what we do on a day-to-day basis. You will be amazed with the community members who are actively working in the courts, and you'll be amazed with our community members who are showing up, who want to be clean, who are getting W-2-paying jobs and contributing to this community, who are raising their kids to be successful adults in a thriving family home. So thank you again for all your support. We could not do what we do without this commission and this community. And again, come, come visit us in drug court. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've attended three drug court graduations, and I didn't make it through any of them with a dry eyes. Some really powerful stories. So, all right, Alex. A couple more speakers on this topic. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All right. Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners, everyone here today. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today and for recognizing Therapeutic Court Month. I'm honored to represent our team and, and the important work that we do every day, and the timing couldn't be better. This month, District Court celebrates the 20th anniversary for our mental health court and the 16th anniversary for our veterans' court. We will also have a celebration this month on May 22nd to celebrate those anniversaries as well. And so we invite the community to come to that. As program manager for these courts, I have firsthand seen how the initiative, how, how this initiative, I'm sorry, changes lives. It's not just a diversion program. It's a life-saving alternative for individuals with mental health needs who find themselves in the criminal justice system. With the right structure, treatment, and support, people who were once cycling through jails and hospitals are now building stable, meaningful lives. We seek progress, not perfection. This work is only possible because of the collaboration and commitment from partners across the justice system, behavioral health, and social services, and because of the ongoing support from the Thurston County Public Defense, the prosecutor's office, and our county commissioners. Your investment in this court is an investment in public safety, fiscal responsibility, and most importantly, in human potential. We continue to see encouraging outcomes with reduced recidivism, increased treatment engagement, and unified families. But beyond the data, we see transformation. We see people who were once hopeless now thriving. That's the impact of, of our programs. So on behalf of the entire team for our therapeutic courts at District Court, I want to thank you again for this recognition and continued commitment. Together, we're building a more compassionate and effective justice system. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for recognizing us. And thank you for my partners here for coming today. And really, they kind of blew out of the water what I really had to say. But what I want to do again is thank you all for the support that you give the therapeutic courts here in Thurston County. It has been my pleasure to be here for about 10 years now and to support our program, which has been running for 27 years this year. As they both, both Rosemary and Alex have mentioned, it's transformative, not only for the individuals that we serve, but for those of us who actually work with these individuals. And we are, we are bringing people back into our communities as contributing members, as people who feel hopeful, as people who have goals and ambitions to also serve our community. And I, I just wanted to give a little, I'll give a little story, just kind of in recognition of this. In May of this year, I received an invitation to a law school graduation of one of our drug court graduates. And he sat for the bar in July of this year. And I'd like to add that he also graduated at the top of his class at Gonzaga Law School. He was accepted to five law schools after starting his undergrad degree while he was in our drug court program. So this is the kind of work we're doing here in Thurston County. And I couldn't be more grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and to support the individuals who are coming out of our programs and also walking back into our community and serving our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John, Rosemary, Alex, Sabrina. This was a record number of consent proclamations on one agenda today. Thank you all for your time today and for coming to speak to these important matters and for all the work you do in our community. Again, you can meet Ellen Massey outside of the boardroom for a photo with your groups and your proclamations. Thanks. Okay. We will now move forward with public comment, which is next up on today's agenda. And the only person that did not have to leave or wanted to give comment is John Sladek. So come on forward.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is John Sladek. I live at 5531 Quigfield Drive, Washington, which is at the Chana Park. What I just wanted to speak to you very briefly about is a fire-damaged home in our neighborhood at 5118 View Ridge Drive. And there'll be two parts that I want to speak to. First, I'm going to speak to you as a homeowner and a neighbor. And I want to acknowledge the great help of Emily Klaus and her staff in bringing this to the county's attention and moving ahead with it. The home burned down about three years ago. I noticed that you all got a copy of a letter that I submitted to Emily on, or Commissioner Klaus, on April 24th. If you open up the letter, you'll see some photographs. If you open up the letter, you'll see some photographs. Anyone like to look at pictures, right?
Yep.
So there's some pictures in there of the home. Now, I'm going to change my hat. I'm going to speak to you as a registered Washington Civil Instructional Engineer. I have about 50 years of experience. I have observed this house from the street, from the Chana Park Green Belt, and also from a neighbor's yard. I have not gone on the property. And you'll see some photographs there that are a result of that. I submitted this letter to Commissioner Klaus on April 24th, and this was an amazing coincidence. The very time that I was taking my letter to the post office, Inspector Chance was posting a "Do not Occupy Unsafe Structure" placard on the home. So that is great progress. Thank you. I just wanted to offer, if there's any way that I can further assist the county development services with this, I'd be glad to do that. And I'm certainly glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else for public comment? I think that covers it. Then let's move on to County Manager update.
Thank you, Chair. Today, I'd like to say special hello to the new Assistant Director of Public Health and Social Services, Jody Becker, already jumping in in Spirit Week and wearing a fresh Prince shirt.
Nice choice.
So we want to just welcome her. I've seen her today through all the windows in this building, making her rounds, saying hi to folks, and we're glad that you're here supporting Public Health and Social Services. Let's give her a warm welcome.
You're making a good first impression with that Prince shirt. Yes. All right. Thank you, County Manager. All right, we have consent items under item five. We have items one through three. Is there any request to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve consent items one through three. Non-detectable motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to department item under six, Public Health and Social Services, Contract with South Puget Sound, Habitat for Humanity, Tleechan. Did I get it?
Tleechan.
Tleechan Town Homes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jen Freihite, Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to approve a contract with South Puget Sound, Habitat for Humanity, for the total amount of $560,000 for the construction of 14 units to be sold for affordable homeownership. Phase one of the Tleechan Town Homes project includes the development of seven duplex town homes, resulting in 14 units for affordable homeownership on Halverson Lane Southeast in Tomwater. When all phases of the project are complete, the Town Homes Development will offer 14 duplex town homes for a total of 28 units for affordable housing that will be sold to low-income, first-time home buyers. Habitat for Humanity applied to Thurston County's Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention's request for proposals for affordable housing capital projects in April of 2024. The Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board recommended this funding award to the Regional Housing Council at the RHC's May 8, 2024 meeting, which received unanimous approval. And then the Board of County Commissioners approved the preliminary funding award for this project at the June 18, 2024 meeting. This funding is to support the project will come from the local home fund, which is a sales and use tax of 1/10 of 1%, which applies throughout all of Thurston County, except for the City of Olympia and the City of Tonino, who have passed their own home fund sales tax legislation. And finally, I want to make sure to thank each of you, as the Commissioners, and to the Regional Housing Council, for leadership in working to house the homeless.
Questions for Dr. Freihite? My question is, I think I see a band T-shirt under that jacket.
I do. It's not Ole Mountain Boys.
What do you got? Can we tell?
It is Paulson Baker. I'll have to tell you about him later.
Can you sing some right now?
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. Maybe also a thank you to the staff. Alex first.
Alex, thank you so much. I know you worked hard on this project, and it's an exciting project.
Yes, very exciting.
And something that the home fund is able to deliver to the community.
Good job, Alex.
All right. Is there a motion?
Oh, I was clapping. I move to approve a contract with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity for the amount of $560,000 for the construction of 14 units to be sold for affordable homeownership and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion and second regarding Contract with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. Discussion on that motion? Hearing non-call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Klaus.
Well, I did not have a whole lot since last week. Over the weekend, I did speak at a graduation called Unlocking Legislative Advocacy. It's a six-month program put on by a group called Civil Survival, which I think most of us are familiar with. One representative on Law and Justice Council is a member of Civil Survival, so the county kind of has a connection with them through that. But I was really honored to be the featured speaker at their graduation on Saturday up in Seattle. I learned a lot about the experiences of people who have been through the justice system and how they are leveraging those experiences and learning how to tell those stories in a way that, you know, actually does shape policy at the state level and kind of talking with them about the importance of getting involved locally and how local involvement can also trigger some changes at the state level in terms of policy. So that was a really good time. I wrapped up a class through Rutgers University called Redefining Justice: Policies That Empower Youth, which was also about folks going through the justice system with an emphasis on policies that empower youth, as you might know by the title. But that was a really good and informative training that allowed me to kind of start looking at how some of these experiences that I'm having out in the community with justice-involved neighbors can translate to policy changes that make the community better for folks with those experiences. Let's see. Oh, I also attended the retirement celebration for Lynn Harding, who is a staff member of the Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency, or ORCA, which is a board that I sit on. So it was nice to give some, you know, fond farewell to Lynn and appreciate her for all of her hard work. And I also, let's see, I think I gave an update on this last week because it was just the day before the last board meeting, but I also attended the TCMC Executive Committee meeting last Monday, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Klaus. Commissioner Forney?
Uh, well, I attended a Tonino school board meeting, but that's because my daughter was giving a presentation on water quality in Scattered Creek, which, still cool, but there were, did I already tell this? I don't remember if I.
I think you said she was going to.
But it was kind of cool because there's also, you know, there's things that we are doing here that intersected with what her science teacher was talking about, and I had put the Chehalis Basin in touch with the seventh-grade science program to monitor the levels of the Scattered Creek throughout the year. So that was kind of cool, so the county, county kind of had a good intersection there. And then I also attended a elementary, a different elementary school where I was a celebrity reader, but they really didn't care much about me being a county commissioner. They wanted me to dress up as a fireman, so I put on my, my other uniform, and, and I read them some, read them some stories, and I did talk to them about county government stuff, but the six-year-old mind is, can only handle so much civics. So we kept it, we kept it pretty surface level, but that's also about all I can explain. Attended my, the Task Force on Jail Modernization workshop on Friday, where we heard from Corrections officers and kind of jail directors to talk about kind of what, what things they're going through and dealing with and experiencing. And that's probably all about, that's all that I would have to share that would be relevant to the whole board since I gave a last presentation.
Our local artist tour was pretty cool.
That was cool, too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Mensah and I were invited to go do a tour of a local artist workshop. It's the, he's actually the brother of Maggie Sanders, who's on the Port Commission, is a gentleman named Micah Sanders. And we're just, you know, I'm, I like going out and meeting local artists, and it was really cool to go out and meet very talented local indigenous artists, and love to have a future conversation about using some of this space that we have here to display and kind of uplift all the different talent that we have throughout the county that, that are artists. So that was kind of one of the concepts we were playing with.
Cool. Thank you. Yeah, so my week, in addition to that tour, had two canvassing board meetings where we certified the election that was in the City of Tomwater for their Transportation Benefit District, which was overwhelmingly approved or re-extended. Thursday night was a fundraiser for the Evergreen State College Scholarship Fund. Our friends and students got to speak to, got to speak to one of the Fisher Grant's interns, who was a speaker at that event, and made reference to her work for the county that's just getting going. Home's first event on Friday, May Day, kind of workers' event on Saturday, the District Resolution Center Peacemaker Celebration on Sunday, work preparing for the climate convention that the county is co-sponsoring on May 17th. I'm speaking on one panel and moderating another panel and participating in a round table, so I'll be there all day. Yeah, they're putting me to work.
Yeah.
So I've got preparation with all the different groups, so we know what we're doing, and that should be a really good event. If you've ever been to this event in the past, it's going to be way bigger. They've got like six breakouts at, on, like, three different times, so there's just a ton of sessions going to be happening. And then attended a meeting, a webinar on community resilience in rural water systems, and that was actually pretty interesting. It could connect up to some of the challenges that we've heard from our local water systems and trying to get technical assistance and funding for projects. I'm going to try to connect those staff and those, those community members with this resource that I learned about today, because I think it might fit. So that could have been, that could turn out to be a really good use of time. So that was my week, and that's the end of the business agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.